Ms. Robey, let's start the meeting.
Roll call for the City Council meeting on Wednesday, May 6, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation.
Mr. President, I would ask that during our time of meditation that we remember all of those in our community, locally and globally, that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. Also ask that we remember all those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. In particular, we want to recognize a loss of a bit of a community giant and legend, if there is such a thing, Mr. Lou Perico, and send our thoughts and energy towards him or his family. And also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the right information and make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Councilman Mersky, can you please introduce our guests? We'll present the colors and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to introduce the East High School JROTC Warrior Battalion to present the colors.
Present. Arms.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Foes. Right. Face. Forward. Arms.
We will now have two presentations. Ms. Mersky?
Good morning. Mr. Kwiatowski and I would like to call up Colonel Joseph Russell from the East High JROTC Warrior Battalion. Lieutenant Colonel Russell, we're very proud to give you this presentation on behalf of Erie City Council. Councilman Kwiatowski and myself have been to many of your dining out events, and you took a good Warrior Battalion, and you had the challenge of coming into something that was good, and you made it even better. That's a challenge, and that's hard to do. You have had many of your groups win national awards. Your students, you've taken them to places they probably never imagined when they were freshmen, and we're very proud of the work that you've done in the Erie community, and we're very proud of the work that you've done with the students of the city of Erie.
I've had the pleasure of working with Colonel Russell many years as a school director and now as a councilman, and I echo Councilman Mersky's comments. I run into these many years students around the city, and it's amazing how the first word out of their mouth is, "Yes, sir, no, sir," and you're not even around. So, I mean, the influence of...
That's what I'm supposed to do.
Right. But the influence of that program and what they've done to the youth and some of the success stories that have come out of that program, many in the military and many in the private sector, is a tribute to you and the sergeant. And it was a pleasure, all these years, to work with you, and good luck on your retirement. I know you'll be back.
Oh, yeah. It's easy to do in Erie, Pennsylvania, which is the most patriotic city in the entire United States, and I'll argue with anybody from Texas on that. Northwest Pennsylvania is full of veterans, and this Erie City School Board has been wonderful to me. The city of Erie has been wonderful to our cadets, and it's easy to work in a place like this, and I am greatly honored, greatly humbled, and I thank you all sincerely for this honor.
Colonel, you've taught the cadets to appreciate the ethical values and principles that underlie good citizenship and develop leadership potential, the importance of physical fitness and good health, and also understanding the importance of high school graduation, college, and other advanced educations for the future successful employment opportunities. You've taught the cadets to understand military history and structure as it relates to American culture. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the city of Erie commends Lieutenant Colonel Joseph M. Russell for his years of service to the East High School JROTC Warrior Battalion, and extend to him our heartfelt thanks and appreciation for all of his good works for the youth of the city of Erie. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Witherspoon also has a presentation this morning.
Mr. President, before Councilman Witherspoon, I just wanted to say to the Colonel on a personal note, thank you, as has been echoed, that you've had some of my younger siblings in your ranks and continue to, my baby, the baby of 14. So, thank you for the investment that you've made in so many kids, but personally, on my younger siblings as well. They talk about you all the time, even though they didn't get you at the time, they appreciate you today even more. So, thank you again for all you've done.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some time ago, we lost an icon here in the city of Erie, and we all offer our condolences from council and administration and many individuals in the city of Erie. That individual was Ed Mead, and I felt it was necessary for me to go one step further on behalf of council. I want to ask Jamie Mead, the son of Ed Mead, to come my place. On behalf of council, we'd like to make a small presentation. Hopefully, you will be able to hang it somewhere in your home. And that's just a small token of the contribution that Ed Mead, who's a dear friend, who was a dear friend of mine, that gave a lot of advice to me on many areas. I want to thank you very much for being here to accept that on behalf of your dad.
Thanks, Mel. Thanks, council. I really appreciate it. It's been a rough month and a half since I lost my father, but I can assure you that he loved this city with all his heart. He loved this community. He'd be very proud, but he was always so modest. He wouldn't take any credit for it, but he'd be very proud of this honor. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Ms. Robey, we now continue with the approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, April 15, 2015, and bills for payment on May 8 and 15, 2015. Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Are there any requests for repository sales? Is anyone, yes, there's someone here? Can you please approach the mic, and if you could talk about your proposal? The one right there.
My name's John Lilly. I'm trying to, I put a bid in for the property, for the piece of land at 548 East 8th Street, and I just purchased it just to maybe make the neighborhood look a little nicer, maybe keep it clean and keep it groomed, and just, you know, just try to make it a better environment for the people in that area and stuff like that. So, I just, my future plans are just to, like, just maintain that and just maybe, just be a good example, I guess, for that, for that, that part of the city.
Okay. Are there questions for this sale proposal?
Mr. Lilly, do you own property nearby to this piece, or this would be the only piece you own in that area?
Well, last year, I purchased a piece of property off the repository sale on East 13th Street.
And was that a vacant lot, too?
No, it's a...
That's a house?
Yeah.
That's a house? And you fixed that one up?
No, actually, I sold it, but I still have the deed in my name because the people I sold it to, we have a land contract, so the deed hasn't switched over yet.
And this piece is just a vacant piece of land? Just vacant?
The new one, or?
Mm-hmm, the new one.
Yeah, yep.
And you don't intend to build on it, or it's not buildable?
Not at this point. I don't have that plan in place right now, but I don't know what, you know, this is just my first step to just get it and, you know, try to maintain it, and, you know, I haven't really thought that far into it yet.
And it's just empty, it's full of garbage or weeds or what right now? What's its...
Well, right now, it's pretty clean, because I go by there, if there's some garbage, I'll pick it up.
You've been cleaning it up?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Even though it's not mine yet, or I don't know if it's going to be, but I just, you know, figured I'd try to...
Yes, so you do live in that neighborhood or work in that neighborhood and, like, or do you just drive by it and clean it up like I don't understand?
Well, I mean, I did used to work in that area.
Okay.
Last year, I worked for a landlord. He had a lot of properties in that area.
Okay.
And I actually helped clean, do landscaping and clean, after people moved out of their homes, I would clean their homes out and get them ready for the next people to move in and stuff, so kind of figured...
Yep.
Why not help in that on my own, you know?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any other council have any questions on this proposal? We will not be voting on this proposal today. We'll vote at the next meeting, so we thank you for coming today and answering our questions and explaining. Thank you.
Oh, you know what, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly, John, is your number, your contact information available? Can you leave that with the clerk's office? You know, I'm just looking through, oh, you know what? I see it. I see it in our paperwork. I'm sorry. Because I may have a question, or we may have a question later, we want to be able to contact you. All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate it, brother.
Thank you. Are there any other repository, or requests for repository sales? Are there any other requests for repository sales? Hearing none, we will go to the citizens to be heard, and there are two citizens who have signed up to speak this morning. Mr. Randy Barnes is first on the list. Is he here today? Is Randy Barnes here today? Seeing he's not here, Mr. Jason Brendel, you're here to speak this morning?
Good morning, council. Well, first and foremost, I know everybody knows me as Jason C. Brendel from 4131 McCollum Avenue in southeast Erie. First and foremost, I would love to bring an awareness to city council. Today, I am officially bringing something to the city of Erie, and we'll be passing this out to you guys up there. I just would let you know that the Human Rights Commission, Equality Federation, and Marriage Equality for USA, Marriage Equality for USA is the umbrella, is the umbrella organization that Marriage Equality for Pennsylvania is under, and that is the Pennsylvania Equality Project currently, right now. And I was a regional director for, co-regional director for the Erie County Chapter for Marriage Equality for Pennsylvania. Just to let you know, Erie's municipality equality index is 57 out of 100. Allentown, our, the third largest city, has 85 out of 100. That is a sad statistics for the LGBT community for the city of Erie. So, what I brought to the city of Erie is this. This is the National Gay Blood Drive. It's going to be happening July 10, 2015. What the National Gay Blood Drive is, is what I'm asking, I'm asking my friends on city council to come donate for me, because right now, the FDA and the CDC says that I cannot donate blood. Last week, the national team from the National Gay Blood Drive and the CDC and the FDA sat down on April 28 during the Supreme Court hearing of the marriage equality case that was brought to the Supreme Court. And there is, there is discussion that in 2016, during Erie's Pride, we could have a blood drive at Erie's Pride or at any Pride event in downtown Erie or in the future years. But the discussion is starting to lift the ban for LGBT citizens to donate blood. So, last year, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh held this in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They're the only two largest cities to do this. So, what I've thought and what I'm doing is I'm bringing it to Erie, because Erie, in northwest Pennsylvania, we have two great organizations, Greater Erie Alliance for Quality, Northwest PA Pride Alliance, that are doing great work for the LGBT community, and I think it's high time that we do possibly have an LGBT liaison with city council in the community. On the, on this sheet, on the second sheet, is the report card from 2014, and on there it says, "A liaison with the city executives and the city council and to work with city officials." I would love to propose that, I would love to step up, and I would love to be that LGBT liaison with city council and the organizations in the LGBT community, because just to let you know that there is a need for an LGBT center in downtown Erie. After doing a lot of work and a lot of homework, we need a community center for the LGBT community, and I will be working on that in the next couple of years. Currently, I'm going to Penn State Baron for political science and community civic engagement, but I think it's high time that we put Erie back on the map, because Erie is a great place, and we treat everyone here with decency, respect, and I would love to see you guys come out to this National Gay Blood Drive on July 10, 2015, at the Community Blood Bank this year. If you have any questions about the index or the blood drive, I'd like to take...
We have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. Now, are there any other citizens to be heard today?
Morning, council. My name is McDonald, and my property is 19th and Reed. I want to talk to you about our time you took away from us. You didn't talk to us about it. I'm going to appeal to the voters that's going to be voting for you all. I'm going to ask them not to vote for you if you don't install our time back. It wasn't fair how you took it from us. You stole it, and all the youths wasn't up there when this happened. So, if the shoe don't fit, don't wear it. We want our time back. We don't want the day. You can have the day. Stack them five minutes on this five minutes. That ain't but twice a month. That's not asking for your life. Give us our time back. As I told you, I'm going to appeal to the voters. You that will not give us our time back, I'm going to talk against you, because you don't have no business up there. The way you took it wasn't fair. You're supposed to be honorable men and women up there. I want you to get honorable. Was nothing honorable about the way you did that. I want to talk to you about these non-taxable that you're voting for. That garbage and stuff that that $2 million and something is owed on, you went about that the wrong way. You should have tried to collect that money out there. In fact, it had no business getting up like that anyway. Somebody's negligent on the job, and they shouldn't even be there, because we're paying you all. You're not up there for nothing, not that you're getting that much, but the people are supposed to be controlling this, they're not doing their job. Anything Joe wants, y'all give it to him. Joe didn't vote you up there. The taxpayers voted you up there, and they can vote you down, just like they voted you up. If you don't mean them no good, then don't be running for nothing, talking about you working for the public. You're not working for the public. I don't know who you're working for, but it's not us. It's not the taxpayers. You should start working for us. Fees, fees, fees going up, that's no good. People can't hardly pay what they're paying now, and fees are going up, and you got these things down here on the waterfront, which they should be paying taxes, they're not paying, and then you're putting up something else, and I know in the future, something else is going up, tax-free. We cannot afford to just keep going on like that. That's not, that's business as usual, and it's no good. It's not good business for the people, especially the old folks. They shouldn't have to pay taxes anyway. We've been paying taxes all our lives. Give us a break. You're breaking our necks and our backs now, and that ain't no good. What do we have to offer our children? You don't even want to give them summer jobs. You're so busy trying to make this, look at all the money you're putting out there in that park. That park look all right to me like it is. It look all right to me like it is. Two and a half million dollars. Where you going to put it out there? You going to put gold in sidewalks now? You just did them sidewalks out there. Then you got them four brick things sitting out there. What are those out there for? You're not spending our, you're not very good stewards with our money. You're not very good stewards with our money. You're throwing our money away. Then you're putting weight on our backs with these other taxes. Don't make sense to me. Now, if I'm wrong, I want you to tell me. But I'm not wrong. I'm coming at you with the truth. It's about time for you to get truthful. Give us our time back. You stole it. You stole it, and it's no good. And quit coming up with all these tax-exempt things. You're putting it on the poor man's back. You're bringing all them foreigners in here, they're getting, you're sending all that money and jobs overseas, then you're bringing them in here to take the rest of the jobs. What, I don't understand it. You take our money and you give it away like you're reaching in the air, and we work our back ends off to try to survive, and we can't get a dime. But them people come in here and get an armful of money. It don't make sense to me, and a lot of those people don't even like us. I don't, I'm not talking about just us, I'm talking about y'all, too. I'm talking about y'all, too. I thank you for your time, and I hope you think about what I'm trying to tell you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard today?
Dan Zimieski, 1017 French. Good morning, citizens, council, and administration. Lots of things to talk about today. First, I'd be remiss, Workers Memorial Day was the other day here in council chambers. I'm not sure, did any, if any, council members attended? So, we would be remiss if we did not remember the four people in our area. We memorialize the big names, but oftentimes, we forget the people who really make up this city and the four lives in our region that were lost in the past year. Lots to talk about. A little upset about this bond, money paving streets. Sent an email to Mr. Witherspoon, some of his comments. I was kind of confused, because he talked about how we've been doing things the old way, as far as funding our streets paving, but bond usually isn't the old way, it's included in the budget, not this bond where we're causing future years and generations to have to pay continued study sessions. I don't know what that means. I mean, we've been an incorporated city for 164 years, and we need continued study sessions to figure out how to pave our streets. I don't understand. I was quite disappointed by the parliamentary snafu, the interruption during citizens to be heard. I'm disappointed that the ranking parliamentarian, who is not here, the solicitor, did not step in and call out of order. Next time, I guess I will have to. I was particularly upset by Ms. Kunzo's, Mrs. Kunzo's comments about the summer jobs program. She did start off by praising all the speakers. There was a lot of great speakers at last meeting, but she said that there was a lot of misinformation. She didn't tell us what that misinformation was. Instead, she criticized all the young people for leaving. They had to get back, of course, to their families, they have school and responsibilities. It was, it really bothered me to hear her say that, that until you receive the formal response from the county jam director, a county bureaucrat, you would not entertain giving money to the summer jobs program. You had a chamber full of citizens in here asking you to put these youths to work, and you said you would not entertain it unless the request came from a county bureaucrat. I was really dumbstruck by that, shocked, to say the least. I'm just not too sure what's going on down here, really not. We're paying out-of-town companies to paint our basketball courts. This was last meeting, I didn't catch it until going through, you know? We could be, you know, having our, having our kids, our youth, paint the basketball courts and help create that civic investment. Instead, we're paying some company from St. Mary's. You know, there's, there's so many different ways we could put, we could make real difference in these streets, but instead, you know, you know, as Mr. Witherspoon did say, we keep doing it the old way, and we really need some new ways of doing things. I'm not sure why we're paying Dahl Kemper Landscape Architects and Contractors almost $3,000 for mulch when we have a compost site, Bureau of Refuge. I mean, we're giving them money for a dump truck. Can't they use that truck to drop off some mulch? There's a lot of stuff here. Hopefully, I'll have some better, I'll be getting some better notes and appreciate responses when I email, respectful emails. I know it's a little late, but thank you for your time, council. Oh, the, one other thing I did want to mention, too, I saw in Erie's viewpoint page, authors must find buyer pay taxes. How about, let's think outside the box. We have a 3% amusement tax. Let's double it and use that money to buy the team, you know? I mean, that's, that's, let's think, some other sorts of funding. I don't know what it would take to get that done, but, you know, we're, you know, we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard today? Yes, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Nope, no problem at all, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Debra Johnson, ah, forgot my glasses. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me? My name is Debra Johnson. I live at 315... My name is Debra Johnson, I live at 315 East Third Street, and I am pastor of the Children's Faith Initiative in Erie County. We do non-traditional worship experiences for children, youth and families throughout the county. I didn't, I didn't want to come this morning, but I couldn't keep watching what's been going on in council without putting my two cents in. Not that my two cents is any more important than anyone else's, but as a citizen, I think I should contribute if I think that I can. The Community Development Block Grant money has a large concern to me. Every organization throughout the county and the city that submits proposals for funding get consideration based on the fact that this is a high-poverty area. The Community Development Grant in specific is directly related to the fact that it's a high-poverty area. However, our children, who are the poorest of any children in Pennsylvania, do not benefit from these grants. I'm not going to rehash all the reasons why children need jobs and young people need, need jobs. I'm not going to rehash that. And I'm not going to rehash the issue of the curfew. I asked someone, I, I hear people making comments about the juvenile curfew, and the fact is, the curfew was originally put into place to be part of a comprehensive plan of health and safety, not a standalone issue. It was supposed to support an idea for a safe place where, I heard the gentleman talk about there being investment for the gay community, especially youth, because they typically have a lot of runaways. This place would be for that. It would be for children picked up, for curfews violations where there was no one at home for them to be able to, the police to drop them off at home. This place would be a place where there would be a citizens review board for behaviors that happen during interactions with the police. All of those things were part of what we talked about initially when we put together an ordinance for the curfew. At the time, the city was involved in Act 47 and did not have the money to contribute to a project like this. Now, it's my feeling that if you say to the community, "We need $500,000 for police overtime", that's fear mongering. That's not an investment in community development. That's saying that we're so afraid that our youth are going to turn into monsters over the summer, that we're going to need $500,000 to keep them off the streets. We failed the youth in Erie. We failed them as long as they're living in poverty. Follow me as I do my math. This is how my math works in my head about this. And I'm not a math whiz, so bear with me, get your calculators out. $250,000 divided by 7.25 cents an hour, $7.25 an hour, for three months, 30 hours a week, comes to about $3,400 per child. Know how many kids could have a job for that amount of money? 7,189 could get a summer job for June, July and August for $250,000. Now, that $3,000 may not sound like it means a whole lot to you and I, but the fact is, I bet that the downtown partnership would love to see 7,000 children hitting their malls and their streets with $3,000 apiece in their pockets. I bet these festivals would be really happy to see children doing that. Now, the process for this has been, as far as I'm concerned, this is how I'm thinking of it. There are several programs throughout the city that have already proven their worth because we've had professionals like Together Erie and the Youth Leadership Institute and Nurturing Hearts, putting programs together that we know are effective for our youth. Why can't we pay the youth to learn while they earn and participate in these programs in the three months that they're out of school during the summer and pay them $7.25 an hour to do it for 30 hours a week? Wow, that five minutes went fast. Is that five minutes?
Yes.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rose?
Can I just wrap up?
Please, Ruth.
Okay. Let me wrap up very quickly. I'm a gardener, and when I garden, I use manure, and a manure, I spread it all over because unless you spread manure all over, it doesn't work in the garden. You need to spread it and you need to put it in. That's what money is to me when I'm looking in a garden. It's like manure. Unless you spread it and work it in, it doesn't work. And if you don't invest in seeds and starter plants, it's not a garden, it's just a big pile of crap. So let's talk about investing in our children by getting together, get a community group together to come and say, people from Nurturing Hearts, people from Youth Leadership Institute, people from Together Erie, and say, "How can we give these kids an opportunity to learn while they earn?" They already have a careers program ready to make that connection between businesses and careers that need specifically trained individuals, so why couldn't we do that? Sorry if I was a little bit disconnected, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard today?
Good morning, council. Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. Feel a little bit like Paul Revere this morning, coming here once again, recognizing how big a challenge it is for a person to stand up in any setting. I know you don't take my coming here lightly, and I don't take you all lightly either. I respect all of you and the work that you do. I'm here this morning, though, to appeal to you for, on behalf of our urban citizens, before you just adopt the CDBG proposal that has been presented to you. It's not my understanding that you voted on it yet. And if you haven't voted on it yet, I'm appealing to you to reorganize the priorities, some of which, some of the previous speakers have talked about, the federal money, $2.8 million plus. The city doesn't deserve all that money for its own programs, and yet they're allocating 97% of it to itself for services that you fund in the general fund, for services that you raise taxes for. It just, it's unconscionable to me. A person who's in the neighborhoods who recognizes that a police-only approach is not working. I'm not saying we don't need the police, we do need the police. And for what I can see, they're doing a good job, but it's not working. And the city talks of its own program, what is it? How is it funded? Who gets these jobs? I don't think the public really understands that. If the city doesn't like the county's job program for kids for the summer, then the city should really have its own program. The goal is to get children jobs. 150 jobs for urban kids is not enough, no matter who's paying for it. Right now, the city has an opportunity to pay for it. City council being the representatives of the people. I'm challenging you to do that. I'm, I'm kind of dismayed this morning also. I look at the street repaving, in my neighborhood, I haven't seen one black person. Not one black person working in the street repaving with public money. Whether it's public money or private money, whether it's authority money or government money, it's not reaching all the people. There's no inclusion. Your own affirmative action reports, your own EEO reports, your own Section III reports, your own reports that you're filing. More has to be done. Something else has to be done. The federal money is an opportunity to do that. I haven't received a penny of city money since 2005. Yes, I put a grant in for Community Development Block Grant money. I asked for $20,000 to serve 150 kids in a year-round program. I was denied. That's not why I'm here. I didn't come here, no time asking you all for myself. Not April 1st, when I joined 25 kids here, not April 15th, when 60 kids came to appeal to you. They'd be here this morning, but they have school. They left early at the last meeting because they had to go home. They're trying to understand democracy, and they're trying to participate in it the best way they can. They know what a job will do to them. One young lady told you, "I have nine people in my house, not one person has income." A junior at Collegiate Academy, multilingual, no one will call her back for a job. If the public sector does not create a public opportunity for work for young people in our urban city, when Baltimore happens in Erie, what are we going to do? Baltimore didn't think it would happen there, they thought it was St. Louis, they thought it was Ferguson. There's no guarantee, any day, any night, that factors could spiral uncontrollable in our own community. And the resources, the federal resources that we have to put towards those kind of challenges, we're putting in the city services for street repaving, for overtime for police, to fund half a million dollars of operation of the federal administration of the programs. $400,000 for redevelopment authority, $350,000 for code enforcement.
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, council. My name is Cynthia Glover Mohammed. I'm at 2213 Parade here in Erie. And my first introduction to coming to council was with Irma Lindsay when I was a child, I'll say a child. And she came here because she believed in the process, so I'm here today. And I haven't been here since Ruby was, I think, president, because when I came, I didn't get any answers. Nobody contacted me to answer what my question was. So I'm here today to say I'm in favor of summer jobs for children, of course. I'm the publisher of the Erie Metropolitan Black Page Business Directory. Some of you are familiar with it. If you're not, I welcome you to go in, invite you to go into the businesses and pick up a copy. We exist as a liaison between the businesses to, to support small business creation. We hope you'll put something in the budget to help us with that. But I wanted to ask you a question, and my question is this. I spoke to Mr. Curtis Jones earlier to see who was the person I should be speaking to. We are in a depressed condition here in the city. All the children that have had loved ones die, uncles, aunts, what have you, that have been murdered, however they left, it's a very depressed condition. And I just have to say that many of the young people that have died, I'm an old childhood major, I worked at the Book of Dwell, at the, pardon me, Martin, with the King Center for about 11 and a half years in the daycare when it first started, and some of the children that have died, I had in daycare when they were three and four years old. One of the young men, I had his dad in daycare, then I had him and his brother in my daycare home. I have a cousin, there's so much going on, there needs to be some, somebody that provides some counseling. I mean, it's nice that the sisters go out and go to the areas where somebody's died at and pray there, but there needs to be some action. We can't keep talking about this, we don't have to be about it. And like Gary was saying, we don't want Baltimore to be here, but we know what comes as a result of non-action. So I'm asking you to come and actually try to do something to help us with that. I wanted to show you something here in the directory. Actually, a young man here produced a pictorial of all the people that have passed, and I added it this year, hoping to get some attention from the children, because we have to start to make a difference. But anyway, I added a poem that I wrote. It's called "Stop the Killing." It says like this, "A mother's heart is dying because our children are dying. Our mother's heart is crying as our children are dying, as they cut, fight and shoot each other. Don't they know? Can't they see what they were created to be? Created to be a king and not to slink. Don't they know? Can't they see that that's their brother and not an enemy? Your mother's heart is crying. We invite you to share the love." And I just wanted to leave that with you. I'm sure I got nervous and didn't present it to you, but I do ask you to come in. Another thing about the directory this year, we included Reverend E.F. Smith, who was an advocate for the black community. He went to the welfare office, he went to the housing authority and advocated for some things that would be positive in the community. Then he went, and I guess he, I won't say he began, but he was a part of migration from this, from the South to come here for the jobs. We'd like to have some new jobs created. Like Gary said, why isn't there a black face helping pave the streets? Doesn't make any sense. Erie's become a very diverse community, as we all know, and many people are here from different places, but they say charity starts at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard today? Are there any other citizens to be heard today? Are there any other citizens to be heard today? Hearing none, we will continue with the rest of the meeting. Ms. Robey?
Ordinances for final passage. Council File 15913, official ordinance number 11-2015. An ordinance approving and adopting amended and restated articles of the incorporation of Erie County Convention Center Authority in the form of appendix A attached here to, and authorizing the filing of the amended and restated articles of incorporation in accordance with the provisions of Act 148 of 1999 as amended and supplemented, known as the Third Class County Convention Center Authority Act. By Mr. Mursky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance bill number 15913, and now known as official file ordinance 11 of 2015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Saran Kunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kautowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City council pass official file ordinance number 1115, finally, by ye seven, nay zero. Council File 15914, official ordinance number 12 of 2015. An ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral debt of the city of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, by authorizing and approving the issuance and sale of 15,410,000 general obligation bonds, federal taxable Series A of 2015, 25,870,000 general obligation bonds, Series B of 2015, for the purposes recited herein. Directing the city clerk to prepare, certify and file the required debt statement and to take all other necessary action. Commending that the city shall include the amount of annual debt service in its budget for each fiscal year, providing for registered, registered bonds, date of the bonds and payment dates, providing for facsimile signatures, seal and authentication, approving the form of the bonds, paying agents, authentication certificate, endorsement and registration, providing for temporary bonds, providing for the stated principal maturity amounts and fixing the rates of interest on the bonds, awarding the bonds at private sale, creating sinking funds, authorizing the proper officials of the city to contact with a bank, to contract with a bank for its services as a sinking fund depository and paying agent, authorizing and directing the city clerk to certify and file with the Department of Community and Economic Development certified copies of the necessary proceedings. Commending that the proceeds of the Series B bonds shall not be used in such manner as to cause the Series B bonds to be arbitrage bonds under federal tax law provisions, authorizing the proper officers of the city to do all things necessary to carry out the ordinance, providing for municipal bond insurance and rescinding all inconsistent ordinances.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Mursky.
Due to my mother-in-law working for PNC Bank and their involvement in this bond issue, I'm going to have to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
By Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance bill number 15914, and now known as official file ordinance number 12 of 2015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Saran Kunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kautowski, Mr. Mursky abstains, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City council pass official file City Council pass official file ordinance number twelve twenty-fifteen, finally, by yea seven, nay zero.
Six, zero, one.
Six, yea's, nays, zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File number fifteen-nine-fifteen, appropriating the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to count thirty-nine-twenty-nine operating transfer, BUDAG, for the Perry Square Project. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Saran Kunso, the council file ordinance fifteen-nine-fifteen, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Saran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt, council file ordinance number fifteen-nine-fifteen, by yea seven, nays, zero, on first reading. Council File fifteen-nine-sixteen, an ordinance appropriating the sum of fourteen thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, and providing for the expenditure thereof donation from Northwest PA Business Coalition. By Mr. Kotowski and seconded by Mr. Jones, the council file number fifteen-nine-sixteen, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Saran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt, council file ordinance fifteen-nine-sixteen, by yea seven, nays, zero, on first reading.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Mr. Winarski, seconds. Do we have any separations? I do have separations. I want to separate New Business one and two, and make a few comments on those.
No other separations?
No other separations. So it's one and two, New Business.
All right, moving to balance of the agenda. Mrs. Saran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. By Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mr. Mersky, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the City Council of the City of Erie supports House Bill eight sixty-nine, recently proposed by PA State Representative Brian Bizarro D. Erie, designed to prevent animal cruelty and prohibit convicted animal abusers from further caring for animals they have harmed. The bill would require people convicted of animal abuse to forfeit the abused animals' shelters, and calling upon the Pennsylvania State Legislature to pass House Bill eight sixty-nine. Discussion?
Yes, I want to make a comment. I put this on the agenda, being an animal of my entire life, I just find it heartbreaking to hear these animal abuse stories. What's more heartbreaking is the abuse that occurs that doesn't appear in the news and doesn't, isn't known. But as many will agree, these animals are part of our family, and this abuse needs to, needs to be stopped and prevented in the future. So, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Mersky.
Just wanted to thank Representative Bizarro for bringing this to the State House, and we stand in support of his legislation, House Bill eight sixty-nine. We see through our Animal Enforcement Division here at the City Police Department, many, many animals that are abused and neglected, and so we stand in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mersky. Yes, I do want to add on, thank you to, of course, PA State, Brian Bizarro, for stepping up and bringing this forward to the, to the state. Thank you.
All right, roll call. Mrs. Saran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. By Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mr. Mersky, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the city solicitor is hereby authorized and directed to prepare an ordinance designating the dog park being developed within McCollum Park, be named Larry R. Fabrizi Dog Park, in honor of former District Justice Larry R. Fabrizi, and after preparation, forward same to City Council for action. Discussion?
Thank you. I put this, this resolution together. This proposal is in honor of longtime former District Justice Larry R. Fabrizi. According to Robbie Fabrizi, his father had a great love for animals, especially dogs. Currently, the land has been prepared, the fencing is up, the city is working on the roadway in the parking area for this park. And again, this amenity is only one of many amenities that are being planned. There was a master plan done in two thousand and seven, and this is just one piece to the puzzle. Dog park equipment is being put in next week, and an opening will be planned soon after. Robbie Fabrizi formed and incorporated an organization to help and support the establishment of the dog park. The organization assisted the city to attain a grant from the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority for equipment, and the organization will continue to seek grants and donations for further park amenities. Thank you.
Roll call. Mrs. Saran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. That will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Witherspoon today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rose, would you work with the administration in obtaining for me a list of contracts that we have awarded this year currently, and the total amount we awarded, who we awarded to, and find out or seek the number of African-Americans that were employed, the number of Hispanics, Hispanic-Americans have been employed, and the number of females that have been employed? The Erie Housing Authority is moving right along. They are doing fantastic job there. John and his staff continue to upgrade public housing, and we continue to be on the top of the list, either one or two, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that's contributed to John's staff, for sure. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Ms. Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. In our legislation today, in our ordinances for first reading, we did have the paving in there for the streets. I have noticed that a lot of the Thirty-Eighth Street corridor and many of the corridors in the city, they're already out there paving and patching as best they can. This is with our own people and with PennDOT, and this is the meat and potatoes of our paving is, was passed today. So look for those paving trucks to be out, putting people to work. Mayor Brothers and McCormick Construction were the low bidders on that, and so we look forward to getting those streets paved. And as always, if you have any complaints about potholes, please call those in or contact one of your City Council members, and we'll get it taken care of for you. There was a, some misinformation last meeting from a citizen about why we paid to have a new fire alarm installed in City Hall. The fire alarm was broken when they tested it, and per building code, we had to get it fixed. And so the statement was, "It works." Well, it didn't work. So that's why we spent the money the way we did. I don't think anyone up here, you know, likes to spend money frivolously. We, it was broken, and we had to fix it. Our Summer Rec Program mailing will be coming out before the end of the school year. We service thousands of kids in the Summer Rec Program. That mailing will be going out sometime in May, and should be in your mailboxes, so look for that. And finally, the Perry Square Project over here, that was federal money dedicated to downtown improvement. It was restricted money, and we had to use it in the downtown area, so we chose to use it to improve Perry Square and finish that project that has been in the works for years. I mean, we've, we started this at least three, four years ago, so that's where that money came from, and it was dedicated money restricted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mersky. Ms. Kunso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an update on the status of the delinquent garbage accounts. We did have some discussion in our Finance Committee. About a year ago, we had two point five million dollars in delinquent refuse bills, and only a hundred customers who were taking part in the payment plans. Now, as of last month, we have over two thousand customers who are taking advantage of the payment plans, which was really kind of a safeguard. We want to make sure people didn't get penalized if they couldn't pay all at once, that they could be in some payment plan, and they can structure their plans accordingly so that they can make good on their bad, their past delinquencies on their garbage accounts. So we appreciate that they've entered into those plans. I know that really has reduced our delinquencies. Now we have only one million dollars' worth of delinquencies that are not under contract to be paid down. So we hope that those other citizens will enter into a payment plan to get that debt paid down. But certainly some great progress on removing the delinquencies on those accounts. Also, just wanted to thank all the volunteers that came out for the Day of Caring. We also had some different youth groups that were out for the National Youth, I can't remember what it's called, Volunteer Day, but, but we appreciate everyone who comes out to do their part in cleaning up our city. I know a lot of neighborhood groups really got out and did a lot of garbage removal and worked in our parks, so we appreciate that. Also, we had a group of volunteers from Mercyhurst College students who came and did the graffiti cleanup at Baldwin Park. Appreciate their work there, those cement structures there that are handball courts, and they're part of the basketball court, and also roller hockey. Get a lot of graffiti on them, so appreciate those young folks for coming out and cleaning that up. We also have some other issues that our Parks Department's gonna look into with some graffiti tags on our new Norman Way Bridge. They're gonna look into cleaning that up for us as well. And I also have the Erie Area Council of Governments meeting this afternoon in Gerard, so we'll be working with the regional governments to look at ways we can cooperate and work together further. So that's all I have to report for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kunso. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things to run through relatively quickly. We've here consta, I almost say constantly, but somewhat regularly about time being taken away from citizens to speak, and I think just to hear that, it may sound like we literally may have just limited people's amount of time. Of course, there is a limit, five minutes each citizen, et cetera. That has not changed in quite some time. What did change is we lessened our number of meetings several years ago, about, maybe about seven or eight years ago now. We lessened the number of meetings, inherently lessening the number of citizens to be heard opportunities, not for that reason, but be, years ago, again, six, seven years ago, we decided to kind of fine-tune some things, and we didn't have to meet every week. We would have meetings just to have meetings. To have four or five meetings a month was just not productive and not the best use of our time, not to rehash all of that. So that is what the comment, where the comment comes from. It's not that we have restricted or changed our meeting order as far as what citizens are able to do and articulate and how much time, but if we lessened our own meetings, which by the way, lessens the amount of time we get to talk as well, about the things we like to share in the community. Next thing, I think it's really important that we really, have really legitimate, excuse me, dialogue around the issues that we're talking about. So whether it's the summer jobs program, whether it's how we utilize CDBG money, I think it's really important too to recognize for the citizens to know that we can't just willy-nilly make decisions with the CDBG funds. It's not like we make it, we send it to ourself, and we just allocate it. Now, there's a proper process that we go through. HUD has to approve the things that we are allocating this money for. They have guidelines. There's a process that we follow. We don't kind of make it up as we go. We may have disagreements about how to utilize it, but I just want to make sure that there's an understanding that it's not just us as the city or City Council, or even the mayor, just kind of in and of ourselves, checking ourselves in that process. So if it was illegal to use the funds the way that we're utilizing them, I am quite sure that HUD and other governing and supervising agencies would have told us about that a long time ago. So I just wanted to kind of have that, make that comment as well. A community, the jobs program, whether it be the JAMS program, things that we're doing in the city already, of course, is extremely important. I don't think anyone has an argument or disagreement about that. I think there are several different things that can be done in quite, done quite differently. When Councilwoman Kunso mentioned about the COG meeting, that might be, I know this is to throw a cog in the cog, but that might be a legitimate conversation to bring up for some interest, interesting discussion, because we're not, this is not the city jobs program, it's the county, and the municipality of the city is being asked, and I get it, being asked to help fund, but there are other municipalities in the COG that would benefit their citizens, youth would benefit as well. So maybe there is some kind of interaction that we can have with members of the COG and their representatives to take some information back to their municipalities, if that hasn't already been done. I think that might broaden the conversation and spread the love, as well as the wealth and the opportunity for all the county municipalities to partake and participate in that. Also, this Friday, in relation to building community and giving individuals opportunities for growth in Erie, there is Ignite Erie Urban Entrepreneurial Event Press Conference, informational conference, this Friday at the eighth, at ten o'clock. I know Council President Brennan may also speak more to this as well. It's really important, this is hosted by the Erie County Gaming Authority, as well as Bridgeway Capital, which is a nonprofit capital organization that works in the city and in, outside the city as well, throughout the state of Pennsylvania. Excuse me. And so this event, this press conference is gonna be held this Friday, talk about the, an upcoming event at the end of the month. And what it is, is going to kind of roll out opportunities for small business owners, urban business owners to grow, to be enhanced, those who have an idea, there's gonna be capital available and made available for your idea to become a reality. And so again, when you see the email, you see the information about it, the Ignite Erie Program, you see the ECRA name on it, you also see the Bridgeway Capital, but it's important to understand as well that the mayor was very involved in the administration, economic development was very involved in the early process of planning. Myself and a few other individuals were involved in the initial dialogue that got us to where we are today, and we'll be hosting that event here in City Hall. So we want to give more information at our next meeting for individuals, again, who are small business owners, entrepreneurial individuals, to be able to come down and participate in that vent, event at the end of the month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, once again, everyone. Just a few notes. I did attend the MTA meeting this past week. Phase one of the expansion project that's going on Parade Street, I don't know if anybody's been by there lately, but has been moving along quite well. Things are really starting to show there, and they had mentioned at that meeting, they are gonna be having a open house probably around midsummer before they start their phase two project, as well as present the phase two project. Once again, this is a sixty million dollar, over a sixty million dollar project, which very well could include a grocery store slash and/or market in the downtown area. Naturally, we'll keep you updated on that. Also, I attended the Port Authority meeting this last week. Nothing major really to report on there. They're just gearing up for their summer season. One note for the citizens who do attend the monthly meetings, they will be held Tuesday, May nineteenth, at twelve o'clock noon, due to the Memorial Day holiday. As we end our annual spring large item cleanup, I want to thank the citizens who did obey the rules of that cleanup. Some took it a little extreme, but I want to also thank the city workers for getting those items picked up in a time- those items picked up in a timely fashion. I still believe it's a good program for the city of Erie and help keep our city a cleaner place to live. Our Erie Otters, me and the Erie Otters, but congratulations to our Erie Otters, being a hockey fan that I am. They have reached the OHL finals. The crowds and the sport have been awesome. Hopefully, we can bring the championship home to Erie as well as keep the team in Erie. They are a definite, definite asset to our community. I also want to thank the Erie Sea Wolves and the Erie Express Football Team. They, oh, I'm sorry, the Explosion Football Team, they have brought, they altered their schedules and times to accommodate for these postseason for the Otters. So it is great that these teams can work together for the good of the community and as the Otters go on their playoff run, their slogan, "Let's Go Otters," the heck with that, "Let's Go Erie Otters." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, I attended the O and E Pension Meeting and they're, the fund is progressing very well, being well managed and nothing to worry about. And I'll, I'll get an up-to-date figure for you next meeting. I attended the airport meeting as I had the chance to get out there and I'm an alternate liaison and it was a very interesting meeting. We found out that our plans in the future to develop the Fenestra site may be in a different way than what they intended, but I was talking to Chris Rogers about it and it's a positive sign. He also was talking about, you always hear about, "Why did we put the runway in? We don't have this, we don't have that." Well, increased service could be on the way, but it's not our call, it's up to the airlines. They determine whether they have the aircraft and the crews to service. As he's mentioned to those of us at the meeting, they're making progress in that area. The airlines are retraining crews, refitting aircraft and hopefully Erie's on the short list for a flight to Newark or possibly, as they have, have been experimenting with the Atlanta flight. That could be a possibility for long-term service. They also have a test flight coming in from Atlanta that's going to go from Atlanta to Detroit and make at least one or two stops in Erie over a couple day period to test the runway and to also make sure that the facility can handle the bigger aircraft. And I think right now, I was talking to a couple people, they're bringing in a hundred-seat aircraft right now. So they're talking about maybe slightly bigger ones to test the market and that could be long-term, that will get them on a permanent basis. I attended the South Erie Neighborhood Watch meeting and Councilman Mersky couldn't be there and I, I was glad to fill in. Same complaints, the neighbors are concerned about the parking issues on Briggs and Lewis and this council last meeting approved a resolution to study those problems. And the neighbors are concerned about that, but they're also concerned about their, their neighbors moving out of their neighborhood on a fairly consistent basis. The bottom of my hill, one of my homes on my block was turned into a rental by one of our notorious landlords, and I'll say that. And I think the neighbors wrote a letter to all of us and to the administration and they have not got an answer and they're a little disappointed. There was one gentleman that, we all got it, I know we did, and none of us had the courtesy to really get back to this gentleman and he, he's got his concerns. And it seems like they feel like they've given up because nobody here listens. They feel like they're on an island. We have to do something. We cannot afford to have another neighborhood or any more neighborhood start to slip. You know, now's the time to get them, not after they're gone, but while they're going down. And we have to start getting a little proactive with landlords, with rentals, parking issues, quality of life issues. Otherwise, you're going to continue to see people vote with their feet and start moving out to Harbor Creek and Mill Creek. And if you don't believe they are, they are. And finally, a gentleman brought up about contracts, why we don't hire more local people. Well, that's not the case at all. When I was Controller, I, I attended all the contract openings. Many times, local merchants and local vendors did not bid because they felt it was out of their domain or they couldn't. I'll give you an example, it's like cars. Everybody says, "Why don't we buy cars locally?" Well, my brother-in-law was a car salesman, says they cannot afford to low-cut the way the state contract does or some, some of these larger firms. But everybody's given a fair chance. I mean, our paving is done by local merchants. And if you feel like it's not fair to hire people from St. Mary's or other towns, consider this. All the steel that went into the Ellentown project, the arena, the hotel and all the convention center and the office towers came from none other than Amthor Steel. So this is a large state and, you know, we'll win some, we'll lose some, but we always look for local merchants and they all have a fair chance. But you know what? The same people condemn us if we took the high bids and their taxes went up. So the bidding process is fair, it's open to anybody. And if anybody wants to know how it works, feel free to contact me. With that, oh, and I'd like to also thank the streets crews and the pickup people who did a great job. I called in a few streets during the height of the, the trash pickup and the, what was amazing was they came out and they came out in a rainstorm and was, was still patching. So we got a lot of work to do, but they're, they're double shifting, doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwiatowski. Ms. Stan Kevich, any report today?
Just a follow-up, the Investment Committee held their interviews to hire possible managers and they're going to bring those recommendations to the Agregate Board at their meeting, which is May twenty-first. And there will be a, a meeting with the members from the Auditor General's Office, May twenty-seventh, to start the process for the audit for the period of January twenty thirteen to December twenty fourteen. So we're going to have a meeting to talk about what information they need and to start that process going with the three pension plans, so that's all.
Great, thank you. Administration report today, Ms. Beck?
Good morning. Just a few things. Last council meeting, I was asked about checking into some trash that was dumped at Thirteenth and Camphausen, I think it was Mr. Jones, so I apologize, I didn't get back to you personally. I did speak with Public Works, that is a known hotbed dumping ground. We are working with the property owners and residents in the neighborhood to try to catch some of these people that are illegally dumping, so we are aware and, and working on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The summer rec program, just to follow up with, from Mr. Mersky's comments, that should be coming out before Memorial Day, we are hoping. I know we just got some final information from Mr. Witherspoon on, on his program and we're working on the final ads for, for Celebrate Erie that are part of that as well. So that should be going to the presses. I know Printing Concepts is waiting for that, so it's, it's on its way to, to the presses and should be delivered to all of the schools, fingers crossed, before Memorial Day. Just a reminder about CDBG funding, we are mandated to do curb cuts, the Americans with Disabilities Acts. Any street that is paved needs to have new curbs put in that costs the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so we are entitled to use the CDBG funding to complete those curb ramps, which are very important to, to our citizens with, with disabilities. So just, just a reminder that that takes a big chunk out of our CDBG funds. This afternoon, I am attending on behalf of the administration, the Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership Roundtable. Mr. Russell Stokes from GE Transportation will be speaking. Hopefully, he'll have good news about things happening out on, on the GE properties and I hope to bring some good information to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Yes, I've reported, I wanted to report a couple of meetings I attended. I attended the first meeting on April twenty-first of the, as an Advisory Board member for the Erie Neighborhood Watch Council. At the meeting, we discussed the vision, the goals, objectives and strategies of the Erie Neighborhood Watch Council. I'm definitely looking forward to continue working with this committee to make Erie a better place to live. I also attended Erie Neighborhood Watch Council's regular monthly meeting on the twenty-eighth of April. The, you know, there's a lot of excellent information shared by all the Neighborhood Watch groups and a lot of discussion about different problems and, you know, it was a good, good, good meeting. I attend the meeting to hear more about the various initiatives that are being undertaken and, and also discuss all the issues. So it was, again, a meeting and I encourage anyone who's looking to see what's going on in their neighborhoods to, to attend that meeting and to, to get involved where they can. A couple of meetings that are being planned, the City of Erie Comprehensive Plan, there's a technical committee meeting at one thirty today and an advisory committee meeting at six thirty. Then also City Council, we have a study session tomorrow evening at five thirty with their consultant for the comprehensive plan. And lastly, I did want to mention, Mr. Jones brought up about the Jack Frost Donuts. Yeah, there is an event coming up, it's this Friday at ten AM at two one one nine Buffalo Road. It's a hundred thousand dollar Ignite Erie investment by Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority and their partners. It's a press conference. It's an intercity business funding program and Darlene Cohen, the owner, has expanded the business and plans to help the neighborhood improve. And I'll be talking, just mentioning some words about the benefits of small business to our community. They add so much and they could really be an anchor for the community if they expand and we all need to support local businesses where we can. And with that, that'll conclude this, this morning's meeting.
City Council adjourns at ten twenty-three. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Saran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.